Good morning, everyone. This is Amy Kemp, the Director of Marketing and Communications. I want to welcome you all to our second virtual town hall. Very excited to have more than 500 of our college employees participating today, which is great. Before we begin, I just want to go over a few housekeeping items. This event, like our last town hall, is being recorded, and I want to thank John Voda for assisting us with that. We will take that video, have it captioned and uploaded to YouTube, and we will share the link with the college within a few days. So for those who are unable to join us today or that may have to drop off before the conclusion of the meeting, you will be able to see the virtual town hall in its entirety, including all of the presentations that will be shared today. With WebEx events, all of the attendees are muted. The panelists will be unmuted when they are speaking. And let's just see everything else. So like our last town hall, we booked 90 minutes for this. There is a lot of information and ground that we hope to cover today, so we may take the full 90 minutes. We will try to shorten that if at all possible, but the information we want to share and answer as many questions as possible, so we may need to take that 90 minutes. We have received dozens of questions. Several of the questions were similar in nature. And so what we will do is try to group those and answer them as generally as possible. If there are specific questions or specific search situations that individuals asked about, we will work to get those answers back to you. And with that, it is now just 10:02. Why don't we wait until 10:03 to officially kick off our virtual town hall with President Hughes? And we'll just wait about one more minute to allow other individuals to join us. Okay, it is now 10:03. And with that, it is my pleasure to introduce President Meghan Hughes.
Thank you so much, Amy, and welcome, everyone, to our virtual town hall. Thank you all for making time to join this town hall. I will be making very brief top-line remarks and then turning it over to the rest of the panelists. And before I do that, I wanted just to share a couple of stories. Yesterday, I worked from our Warwick campus. It was just fantastic to see folks from facilities and campus police. I got the opportunity to walk through enrollment services and the bookstore and visit with members of those teams. It was just great to be there with all of you. I had the opportunity to walk with Jeff through the brand-new ramp, which is just beautiful. Looks so graceful from the outside, is wonderful from the inside. And it's something I'm very excited about, all of us, being able to look forward to when we come back to that campus. Walked through the Great Hall, which looks very different from the way we left it in the middle of March. And I very much want to thank all the folks from facilities from the work they're doing to ready our campuses. The Great Hall looks different in some very essential and predictable ways. Those spaces that we are all now used to using for gathering have been recreated so that our students can work in a socially-distanced fashion and we can make available what we know is absolutely crucial for all of our students. In many cases, access to strong Wi-Fi, access just to the sense of reminding themselves and living their truth, which is they are college students and this is their college and this is one of their buildings. So while it looks very different, it was encouraging to me and inspiring to see this community come together and create the college that we are for right now. The same is true for the computer labs, which have been set up so thoughtfully. And I finished my walk by walking through the new construction going on in our chemistry and biology labs. So while it is certainly a very, very different space right now, what I took from my walk was the college is continuing and the very people that have been hard at work for so many years are still very hard at work, continuing to run our college. So I want to thank everyone. The only other story I wanted to share, Dina Levitry and our English department very generously let me join one of her classes earlier this week. And just as I have had the opportunity now virtually since we moved to this forum to talk with students, I was able to talk with her students for a few minutes and ask them a couple of questions. And of course, the most obvious question is, how is this learning environment going for you? And while I have absolutely spoken with students who, as we would expect, experience very real challenges to going to college in this environment, it was encouraging and inspiring to me to hear from Dina's class. And there were two messages in particular that I wanted to share to all of us, with all of us. The first was a mother with young children. And her description, and of course, I'm paraphrasing, was essentially, "I've wanted to take this class for a long time. The fact that the college is offering the class in this modality allows me to take it." So she was so positive, of course, about Dina's teaching, but also about the way she was able to be a student in Dina's classroom. And the second was a student who has very, very serious health challenges and who just very candidly shared she wouldn't be in a position to visit one of our campuses. And so the fact that this class was being run in this modality allowed her to participate. So again, Dina, just thank you. It was an inspiring class to join, and I appreciate you letting me do so. I'll move now just to a very top-line summary of our campus plan for fall and our fiscal position. Both Alix Ogden and Kristin Alberton will be spending time with you momentarily, where they will more thoroughly and in a more detailed fashion lay out both of those topics. What I want to offer now is, as I hope you all know, we released our campus plan earlier this week. And what do we know to be true? We know that just as we have, since the pandemic began in Rhode Island in the middle of March, we will need to continue to be responsive to the virus itself and adjust our practice and our operations accordingly. We will continue to adapt and adjust to the situation as it evolves. This fall, as Rosemary Costigan will share with you momentarily, most of our classes will be delivered remotely with in-person instruction offered in a variety of healthcare, advanced manufacturing, and other areas that she will more fully outline. Our mode of working at the college will be impacted by the virus and will depend upon the changes and adaptations the college plan details. Your team managers are working up department-level plans and will be sharing those with you all in the middle of August, so in roughly two weeks. And now to our fiscal position. As Kristin Alberton will share with you this morning, there is very real and significant uncertainty surrounding our budget this year, so our fiscal year '21 budget. As you all know, the college has two main revenue sources: our state appropriation, so what the state allocates to us every year, and our tuition dollars. What Kristin and her team and my team are preparing right now and have been preparing over the last several months are several scenarios in which we anticipate both state appropriation revenue and tuition revenue being down significantly. And what's important about this, beyond what's obvious, is that this is different from what the college experienced 11 years ago or so during the Great Recession. And as many of you were here, what we'll remember is one of those two revenue sources was cut significantly. And that was our state appropriation. It presented a challenge to the college at that time. What is different about this moment is across the country, this is true, and this has been true at CCRI certainly. And that is, when there is an economic recession nationally and in Rhode Island, historically, what we have seen is that students return to college and we actually then receive something of a cushion on that side of our revenue column. Meaning, what we saw over a decade ago was our enrollment reach record numbers. As Sarah Enright, who oversees Student Services and Enrollment, will share with you momentarily, that is not what we are facing today. And we know that the pandemic is having a significant downward push on our enrollment numbers. That makes our financial picture more serious than any other picture this college has experienced. I want to share with the college community one measure we are taking in response to this crisis. I will be taking a salary reduction, as will our vice presidents and our associate vice presidents. As we continue to monitor our fiscal position, we may need to then look to additional non-unionized Board of Education employees for salary reductions. We don't yet know the broader impact on our employees because we don't yet know what revenue will be coming to CCRI this year. We're talking and listening with our state leaders daily. And what we know they have communicated broadly is that in the absence of a second federal stimulus bill, so a bill coming from Washington, the state anticipates needing to proceed with layoffs. We speak with our federal delegation regularly to learn more about what a second stimulus bill might bring to CCRI, might bring to this college. We know that Sarah Enright and her team are tracking enrollment hourly. Kristin Alberton and her team are modeling financial situations and scenarios every day based on new information we receive. And so I'll conclude by saying, I recognize that this is a very challenging time for everyone. We will continue to prepare for a variety of both COVID and fiscal-related scenarios. Our goal with today's town hall is to share where we are right now with our campus planning, enrollment, academics, and budget position. We will address, as Amy Kemp said, many of the questions you sent in advance of our town hall. And we ask that you submit additional questions that are raised by this town hall to marketing@ccri.edu. Amy and her team will oversee and project manage responding to those questions. So before I turn it over to Alix, I just want to conclude by saying, we are going to make it through this crisis. We will make it through together. What I have observed this college do since the middle of March is deeply compelling and inspiring, and I remain so grateful to all of you for coming together to support our mission, to support our students, and to continue to make CCRI such a strong college and central contributor to Rhode Island. So thank you all. And with that, I'll turn it over to Alix Ogden.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you. I am here today to talk about our campus opening plan. We sent it out to the community on Tuesday. So I'm hoping all of you had some time to sit with it. And I know that we got a number of additional questions after that distribution. And certainly, we will work today to answer the ones that we can and share with you. When we don't have conclusive answers, share with you where we are in the conversation, whether that's with the Department of Health or internally. So next slide, please. So I just wanted to start with what our underlying principles are as we think about the fall. And so, of course, not a safety first. We're really working to figure out how to mitigate the risks of being on campus and are doing so with your safety and well-being primarily in mind. We also know and have seen over the course since March, you know, everyone on this call, everyone in the college really remain mission-focused. And we will keep doing that and really have that as one of the fundamental principles of our planning and our decision-making going forward. And we know that we all want to do that for our students. And so we'll maintain that mission, as I know that you all have been and will continue to do so. We also know we need to be flexible. I think that we've all watched over these past months as guidelines and conditions have changed, sometimes on a weekly basis. And we will be responding to that in a very quick manner as we adopt this kind of new normal. And we've heard a lot about that term. But what we do know and what we've all been working towards over the spring and the summer, faculty, staff, and students, is that we're working in a reimagined way. And it is one that requires us to be nimble and adaptive. And we will do that. And I hope that you see the ways that we've tried to build that into the plan and in this presentation. Next slide, please. So I just wanted to give everyone a sense of the timeline and some of the activities. So when I think about March 23rd, that's when, you know, the students came back to the college after spring break and we moved to remote teaching and learning and working. As soon as we did that, we created what's called, at the time, called the Incident Response Team, which was a group of people, included Chief Collins, the VPs and AVPs, Dean of Students, and more. I met every day for about three months to both support the different work as it was evolving in the college and to kind of digest the guidance that we were getting and figuring out what that meant for the college. In addition, we were also having many meetings with people external to the college. So the state created a higher ed group, and so that included private and public higher eds. And we met weekly, and each week, we would talk about different topics and learn from the Department of Health. So whether it was contact tracing one week, testing another. And that happened through April and May and was really helpful to learn and to find out more and then to be able to bring that back and to share that with our response team so that we could all be thinking with the same kinds of information. So we created a draft plan and we submitted it on June 15th, which is what was required by the state. And each institution then had a meeting with the Department of Health to hear their feedback, to have them ask questions. And then we took that feedback back and we built out the plan over the course of July and then distributed it on Tuesday. What I see going forward in August is really when I think about nimble and flexible and listening really hard and responding, is that there's going to be a ton of additional details and follow-up that will be engaged in August. And frankly, the timeline stops at the first day of classes, but it'll continue into September. So I just wanted to give people a sense of what's been happening around this piece since we went to remote. So with that, next slide, please. So one of the things that I certainly found myself talking a lot about, and I know that President Hughes did as well, is so we're sitting with the other higher eds in this state. There are 11 of them. And there are things about CCRI that are unique. And we needed to take into account and doing our plan. So we all know we don't have residence halls, but 96% of our students come from different parts of Rhode Island. And if in a typical, you know, day in Warwick, you'd have 6,000 students from all over Rhode Island come into the building. And then they go home at night and then go to work. So it's a really different dynamic. We also know that our students are in critical infrastructure roles. So when we think about our healthcare students, food service, grocery, they're all working. They're working and they're working often in these critical infrastructure roles. We also don't have a health center. You know, the other colleges and universities have an onsite health center with multiple healthcare professionals. So those three things really, I kept coming back to and talking with the Department of Health, place us in a different place. And I think, and I'll address this a little bit later, but other institutions have different facets of their plan because they have, for example, an onsite health center. They can do different things than we can, and we're going to manage certain things differently. Next slide, please. So what should you expect? So there's been a lot of people that have gone to campus either because they're going, our essential workers and facilities and campus police and other parts of our college who have been going through our entry process. And as more people come back to campus, this will be expected of you. You'll be required to show an ID. We would hope that would be your CCRI ID, but we do know that not everyone, including students, have that. But you can't get in without an ID. You are going to have to self-report through a screening process. We are working on building a self-attestation tool, which would make getting into the building faster. You may be able to take the questionnaire on your phone and then get a green checkmark or something so that we know that you have agreed that you haven't answered yes to any of the questions that all of us have become very accustomed to. And then we've ordered no-contact temperature checks. I've had my temperature screened on one of them. It's very quick. It takes about two seconds. And you basically are given permission to proceed. And we really are going to, we can't emphasize enough. If you're sick or you've traveled internationally or to a place in the U.S. with 5% or greater infection rate, we don't want you to come into the building. And we actually don't want you to, you know, we don't want you to be in touch with your com. We need you to think about the self-care that you might need. And I'll talk a little bit more about this later in the presentation. You are going to see new signs and markings, whether that's directional signs on the floor. There'll be new capacity indicators in conference rooms. And there'll be general signage about symptoms and social distancing. You'll see circulation. There'll be marks on the ground wherever we might expect lines. We're also going to ask for you, as individuals, to be part of this work and participating in the protective measures, which includes mask-wearing in all common areas and offices unless you're working alone in an office. And there will be exceptions in underlying conditions, certainly. And we recognize that if you are teaching in a classroom, teaching behind a mask is very challenging. And so there are those exceptions that we will be making. We'll ask for social distancing everywhere possible. And we will send people who report being sick or appear sick will be sent home immediately. And then there'll be physical changes. If you go to the campus now, you'd see that there's plexiglass up where there are face-to-face interactions that are required and frequent. And we're going to continue, as we get more materials, putting up plexiglass. So you will be seeing more of that. Furniture has been removed to create greater circulation and allow for social distancing. And then there'll be cleaning supplies will be provided to you so you can clean your workstation or your office. Next slide, please. So there's been lots of questions about testing. So this is when I have current state. We're not going to be testing on campus. We don't have the onsite health centers that would allow for us to do that. The state is doing a state surveillance testing program, and we are going to be part of that. We'll have more details on that. The state's still building what that's going to look like. But Jen, my current understanding is that will mean there'll be some request for us to have a portion of our school population get tested in neighborhood testing sites that are all around the state now. I think like at a CVS that has them. So I will share those greater details when I have them. That program is still being built. I will say that testing, I guess I'll say a couple more things about testing. Currently, Rhode Island's doing a lot of testing compared to other states. What has happened is that there is a lag in getting test results back. And that will affect kind of how we manage certain things. But in some cases, it takes seven days. So, you know, I feel like the testing piece are very focused on K-12 right now and how to manage that. But I will come back to all of you with more information about how we will be participating in the statewide program. Bookstore, the bookstore is built, you know, it's mostly going online. The staff, there's a very detailed plan that the bookstore has around how the staff will interact and kind of limit interactions with each other. And then for food service, it's likely to be a grab-and-go model. The one thing, caveat, I would say here is that as we learn more about the flow of people on campus, we are going to have to respond to that in terms of kind of traffic and demand for food service. Next slide, please. So obviously, there's a lot of human resource implications with all of this. So if you're feeling unwell and unable to work or you're required to self-quarantine, you can request to work remotely. I think that we've all developed our skills around remote work and our tools. And so we absolutely have that ability to do it. And then, you know, if you've been in close contact with someone who's infected, again, you can ask to work remotely and work with Human Resources about it. But if you have been, we are going to ask you to wait 14 days after exposure. And if you're asymptomatic, you can come back. Or, you know, you can return earlier if you provide a negative test result confirming that you don't have the virus. So if you believe that you do have an underlying condition or you live with someone who's high-risk, we're going to ask you to contact Human Resources. And this kind of gets into the areas, like, things are going to be about individual circumstances. And Teri Ann Milligan in HR, that is her email address. Where to reach her is going to be running point for the college on these questions and determinations. So please know that she's a resource for you. And these are currently based on what we understand. These are the very general rules that we will be following. Next slide, please. Okay, so cleaning. We're going to be cleaning high-traffic and contact areas, so like doorknobs and bathrooms and things like that. The CDC recommends this EPA-rated endless product. That's what we are using and will continue to use. We have purchased electrostatic sprayers, which are a very efficient way of disinfecting a space. And so as I mentioned before, we'll provide cleaning supplies to each officer, to each individual. And the person at that workstation or in that office will be expected to use the supplies to clean their own office, but that we will provide the supplies. And then we can, in some places, prop open doors. We do have to take into account fire regulations. But we will be, you know, avoiding as many high-touch places or reducing the number of high-touch spaces where we can. And then, so I said clean classrooms, but really, the electrostatic sprayers, we're going to be, that's going to be one of our real strategies around this. So it's not just classrooms. It's going to be anywhere where people are using. So it would include a place like the Great Hall. Next slide, please. And then some additional steps. And President Hughes referred to some of them. So in our plan, we talk about how we went back to Goody Clancy, who is our Facilities Master Planning Consultant. They had a ton of data about our capacities. And then what they did is they worked with us in the spring to figure out with the six-foot social distancing requirement, what the adjusted capacities are for our classrooms, our labs, and our common areas. So it was incredibly helpful. Felt like we have a really good idea about it. And I think the one thing that we found out is that we generally have small classrooms. And when you put the six-foot social distancing around each individual and give space for instruction, then you also have to take into account circulation. So there's a lot of considerations that go into the adjusted capacity. But the resource that we then have is that we do know that we have But the, the, the resource that we then have is that we do know that we have spaces that small groups or two people could meet in a, in a very socially-distanced manner, if, and take the opportunity for face-to-face interaction. So we'll, we'll make those classrooms available to faculty if they want to hold office hours there. If, we'll, for student services, for counselors and advisors. So we'll see, but we do have all of that information and want to make what that now, a repurposed space available. And then we're setting up, Megan talked about the Great Hall. So we've taken tablet desks from the sixth floor in order to, as we reduce capacity in the classrooms. And we've set up tablet desks in the Great Hall socially spaced apart. And that's where we'll replicate that in, on the other campuses to provide our students with a place to access Wi-Fi, have a quiet, have a quiet place to do work and close to student services staff and other resources on campus. And then we've outfitted a limited number of classrooms with the technology to make it high-flex. So if a professor wanted to split up the class, for example, the one half of the class could meet in the classroom on Monday, and the rest of the class could be learning through the high-flex technology. And then the ones that were remote on Monday could come in on Wednesday, and the ones that were in class on Monday could learn remotely on Wednesday. So we'll have that available too. And so more to come on that later. Next slide, please. So what's next? So supervisors today will be provided with a template to develop a return-to-work plan for their staff and within their work areas. We are asking those supervisors to bring that back to their divisional VPs by August 10th. And then we will be notifying staff of what, what their, the fall schedule looks like. But we'll expect the supervisors to meet with their staff to talk about what the staff know about their fall. In particular, I say that for staff that are parents who are learning from their school districts. And that's one of the places we're going to have to be flexible, as people do learn about their children's, how their school days are structured. But there are a variety of measures. I've already alluded to a couple of them, but flexing workdays or hours to limit the number of people in a work area at any given time. And then what removal or reconfigure of furniture that would be, would allow for greater circulation and fewer numbers of people. And then you also may be signed to a different, a different work area on the same campus, again, in order to limit the number of people congregating in one area. Marketing Communications is working to develop a Fall 2020 Employee Handbook that will cover a lot of things and will give to each employee, so they have it as a reference. And then you're just going to keep hearing a lot about fall planning and resources as we learn more and share that with you. So I think that's the end of my slide. So I will now turn it over to Vice President Costigan.
Good morning, everyone. I would like to begin by welcoming everyone to the Town Hall and talk about what we have just experienced in the last six months. We had an unprecedented spring academic semester, as you've all experienced, that quickly rolled into summer. Concurrently with this, we needed to assess how faculty were feeling in their level of preparedness. So my remarks today will talk about what the goals are for us as we move into fall, share with you what the distribution of course sections will look like and what are some strategies that we use to help prepare faculty for remote teaching in the fall. Concurrently with rolling out the summer schedule, we recognize that faculty were going to require some additional support. We engaged with Blackboard, our learning management system, their team, their educational team, our CIT team, our Center for Instructional Technology, as well as our online and instructional design team members. Our goal was to ensure the following three outcomes. And the first one is that we create a consistent and learning experience for our students. So the surveys that we utilized for both faculty and student did talk about the need to be consistent in the delivery of our curriculum. The second goal is that we create a learning environment that provides for active engagement between the students and the faculty. And the survey also revealed that that was an area faculty were looking for more development. And finally, the third goal was talking to the maintenance of consistent academic quality and academic integrity. As a result, we offered several options for faculty to obtain some professional development over the summer. The first one was the Blackboard Academy, which enrolled 354 faculty. 182 of those faculty were full-time, so it was a phenomenal response. We had 172 part-time. Concurrently, our online and instructional design team offered our effective practices for teaching online. We had a cohort in June, of which there were 34 completers, 14 full-time, 20 part-time. And there is a second cohort underway now with a total of 28 faculty, as you can see here. In addition to this, this, we are in our third year now of offering effective teaching practice courses in, in collaboration with AQ. This year, we had 20 graduates. Now, this course does focus on faculty-student engagement, different assessments, and course design best practices. In addition to these opportunities for professional development, we also were able to work with Blackboard instructional designers and develop 42 shareable Blackboard course templates, where faculty had agreed to work with the team and develop these templates that could be shared. And faculty can adopt them as a whole and, and then modify them with their own voice. But certainly, what it would provide is consistency between, between sections within the same course. Next slide, please. So as far as the fall course offerings, this is a breakdown of, of the percentage of sections and how they will be offered. I'd first like to say that there are approximately 568 discrete course, courses. Then there are over 2,800 individual sections. So what you're going to see here is a breakdown of the percentage of sections and how they will be delivered. So 76% of our course sections will be delivered remotely. We will have an equal distribution of 12% that will be online learning. As we have, this is a number as consistent in the past, we're usually around 13, 12 to 13%. The distance learning is a course that's intentionally designed to be delivered in an online platform. And then we have approximately 12% of our courses, our course sections, that will be offered on campus. These on-campus offerings will be primarily hybrid and/or health and science labs. Next slide, please. This slide helps to break down the number of sections per division that we anticipate will have presence on the campus. And as you can see, for our Humanities Social Sciences, there are approximately 83 sections that will use the campus. Our Business Science Technology Engineering and Math, 54. Our Health and Rehabilitation Sciences, I believe we're over 120, 121, primarily for labs and simulations. The library, this is an evolving schedule. Dean Hart and I are still exploring the expansion of hours and days for the library. This will be a critical area for our students to access internet, do studying in quiet places, and work with our library librarians in terms of accessing additional resources. So the library will absolutely become a critical place for our students. Next, next slide. So what have we done? We surveyed faculty. We, we surveyed faculty in late June, early July. We had a very strong response. We had over 300 and, over, I'm sorry, we had over 630 faculty that responded. Full-time faculty were overrepresented in that, which was wonderful. And what it told us, that survey, was that faculty were comfortable with Blackboard and particularly comfortable with information sharing. But what they were looking for additional support in was active engagement with student, with student platforms such as collaborate, discussion boards, working with assessments and assignments. The courses that we have offered this summer have taken that information, and they have tailored the instruction to assist our faculty. Again, we engaged our learning management system, which is Blackboard, and we were able to educate over 380 faculty, which is just phenomenal. This involved a five-module course, which was two hours each. We had four cohorts, and the response was very, very strong. And then the third thing is sharing. So we, we had our top 40 enrolled courses that faculty volunteered to come together and develop a, a template that could be utilized for people who may be coming on new or who are looking to have additional resources when they are preparing for their, for their course in the fall. So what's next? Well, our team from ECO, Karen Belmier and Meech, and Meech McIntyre, they will be offering another EPTO course in the fall. They will continue to also do one-to-ones. And our Center for Instructional Technology team will also have been working very hard during this transition, will be available for one-to-one consultation. What I would ask today from, from our faculty is to spread the word about CCRI. If you are familiar with students who have not yet re-enrolled, that you had last semester, if you have friends and family with college-age students who may be deciding on a gap year, which, by the way, is not necessarily a good idea to, to lead to a, a college degree at some point in their life, I would ask that you do all you can to recruit for us at CCRI, which is, as we know, a high-quality opportunity, high-quality instruction opportunity for our students to move on and/or move into the workforce. This concludes my remarks, and I, at this point, have the pleasure of introducing our Vice President for Student Affairs, Sarah Enright. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you, Rosemary. My primary goal this morning is to talk to all of you about where we are with respect to enrollment. I guess first, I just want to say hello. I mean, I think that we all have chosen to be part of the Community College of Rhode Island community because we care about our students and each other, and we want to be a part of something. And I will be the first to admit that I miss what that feels like. I miss seeing Jeff in facilities and saying hello. I miss seeing Joanne Galliano getting her giant iced coffee every day. I miss Roger Avino knocking on my door saying, hey, can we just talk about one student situation? And for those of you who are in the classroom or with students every day of your jobs and careers, I can imagine that you are feeling the same. So it's weird not to see all of you, but at the same time, it's good to know that somehow I'm speaking to 500 members of our community. So just good morning. So with that, Amy, if you want to go to the next slide, my goal today is to give you a sense of how we're doing, what we think underlies the challenges that we're seeing, how we're responding, and how all 500-plus of you can be a part of moving our college forward over the next four and a half weeks. So, next slide, please. So how are we doing? I think, as most of you know, if you've heard me speak in the past, I spend a lot of time, particularly this time of year, thinking about enrollment, looking at the numbers, and thinking iteratively each day about what actions do we need to be taking to ensure that we are in a strong position for the fall and that we are supporting students in having a path forward in their education. Right now, we are quite far behind. So our goal for this fall was to have the same enrollment that we had last fall, which on a headcount basis would be 14,775 students. And we measure day over day, you know, to T-minus 33 days, what did that look like last year? What does that look like this year? And we are very far behind. So we had over 12,000 students at this time last year, and right now, we have over 9,000. As of just a couple minutes ago, before I started speaking, it was 9,634 students, which on a headcount basis has us behind by 23%. On a credit basis, has us behind by 25%. But any way you look at it, that is a large gap to close in a limited period of time. So you've probably heard me speak in years past, and I get nervous, and it keeps me up at night if we're behind 2% or 3% or 5%. So being behind 25% is massive. And I don't want to say that it's insurmountable, because I am a forever optimist, and I have tremendous belief in our team. So if I have one hope or goal today, it's to just broaden our collective action in service of this goal, because it's, it's the goal that matters. So we can talk about the financial impact, and that is material and important and critical to our institution. But serving as many students as we possibly can and providing a path forward to higher education is why we all get up and go to work in the morning. So more than anything, this is our mission. And I think delivering on it right now, in the middle of the first pandemic that we've all experienced, is hard. And so I am proud of the way that we're rising to the challenge, and I think we're going to have to keep doing that day over day and, and sort of minute by minute. So Amy, if you can go to the next slide, please. I've had a lot of questions, I've had a lot of really good conversations. I've done reading, I've talked to folks at other institutions, I've talked to many of you. And I think the big questions are, you know, what's going on? Normally, in an economic downturn, community college enrollment skyrockets because people, instead of the labor market, choose to enter higher education. But that has not been the case right now, not for our college and not for most community colleges. So while we're behind 23% or 25%, depending on how you look at it, Bunker Hill is behind 29% right now. Some schools in the Connecticut system are even worse off. The New Hampshire system, on average across all their institutions, is in the 20s. So we're not an anomaly here. But I guess what I would say is, in this context, we want to be the anomaly. We want to be the institution that figures out how to surmount what is not one challenge, but a range of challenges. So first off, we started registration a week late, and that was absolutely the right decision. There was a whole lot that we had to figure out to get registrations stood up for the fall. But that's a delay, and that's a delay that has an impact. That's one, one less week that we are working with in this time-bound challenge. I think the other is, and I may have talked about this a little bit on our last Town Hall, there are a lot of what we call fence sitters, a lot of people out there, and they're probably your own family members, neighbors, and people you know, your own students who you had in the spring. But a lot of students who are trying to figure out, in the midst of everything that's changing, you know, we just talked about the K-12 system, the labor market, do I have a job? Do I have to work more? Do I have to work less? There are so many different things going on, that people are not in a hurry to lock in their educational plans. So we, that, that's just a reality. And a lot of folks that I've talked to in my position are seeing the same thing. They're saying, yep, we're seeing delayed decision-making, and students who are saying, I haven't, I just haven't made up my mind yet. I think we also know, you know, and I monitor our text exchanges daily, so I see some of these. We have students who say, thanks, I appreciate you reaching out. I'm going to come back when CCRI is in person again. And so it's our hope that all of the effort that we are putting into reaching out to students, to engaging them, to engaging them, to demonstrating just how much effort we've put into delivering the best remote teaching and learning possible. For those students who are unsure, I think that is helping. But there are some students who are quite decided in the fact that they plan to return when we are in person again. And then I think the other reality for our community college and so many community colleges across the country is that every element of this pandemic is hitting low-income communities harder. It's hitting community college students harder. Whether that is a pandemic that, from a health perspective and a public health perspective, is hitting low-income communities and communities of color much harder. Whether that is unemployment, you know, if you look at who's unemployed in Rhode Island, the vast majority of unemployed Rhode Islanders are people earning under $40,000 a year. Those are our students and those are our students' families. So with that, we want to be there to support our students and we want to be working with them to say, given all that you are juggling, how do we support you in fitting education into your path forward? And we're going to try to make that work in as many student situations as possible. And we also recognize it's not going to work for every single student. So those are the challenges. If we go to the next slide, I want to talk a little bit about kind of where we are today and addressing those challenges. First, I don't think we've ever done more outreach as an institution. So to everyone who's on this call from Student Services, just thank you. I looked at the text inbox this morning and it's over 110,000 texts that we have now responded to. The vast majority of those have come since this pandemic began. I think that inbox was around 20,000 or 30,000 back in March when we started this. So we have been hustling and we will continue to do so. Our marketing team, there are just a couple of clips of the ad campaigns we have underway that have been phenomenal partners in making sure that we are constantly reaching out and getting out there through every form of media possible. I think no team has been more nimble than our advising and counseling team through this and just the way that they have iterated to go from booked appointments online to now drop-in appointments online to just flexing with each day and constantly iterating and improving. We've got a lot of self-service tools. We've now got videos on here's how you register. We've got the Rhode Island Promise steps tracker, so students can go in and see exactly what they need to do. We've been looking at how we reduce financial barriers. So we've done deferral of prior balances, so that if you don't have the funds to pay an old balance to CCRi today, that shouldn't stop you from enrolling in fall classes. We partnered with the foundation to increase scholarship funding and we also still have CARES money remaining for additional technology grants and supports for the fall. So there's a lot going on and I think it's going well. I think we're doing as much right now as any school is doing. And I guess if we flip to the next slide, it's about how do we do even more? Because we're seeing that despite doing more than nearly any community college and despite the amount of hustle and effort and energy that we're putting into this, we probably still need to do more to reach our goal. And I would say communicate, collaborate, innovate. If I had to just pick one of those and put one word on this slide, it would be communicate. The biggest message that came through in our student surveys and even in our just one-on-one engagement with students is that they want to hear from us. And that's not surprising. I think about myself, I'm in this little five-by-five office all day and it's isolating. And I think we all feel that in different ways. But I think for our students, they are both isolated due to this pandemic and also faced with such a wide range of challenges that they need to, one, see that CCRi is front and center and reaching out to them. And two, feel like we really want to be connected to them and we really want to support them in moving forward. And I think that takes all of us. So I talked about, you know, we have 9,634 students enrolled right now, maybe a couple more than that since I started talking. That's just over 5,000 shy of our goal. So if we think about it this way, there are 500 of us roughly on this call. If we each find 10 students and support 10 students over the next four and a half weeks in getting set up for fall, we're there. So when you start to break this down and you start to think about the power of collective effort and collective engagement, you realize that a goal that may seem insurmountable at first pass is actually quite achievable when we start to break it down. So my ask of all of you, if you're a faculty member and you were teaching in the spring, just reach out and say hello to those students. See if people have questions about, I don't know, what's the next psychology course that they should take? Or are they all set and moving forward? Do they have any questions? It's, I don't think it's that, my expectation would be that everyone does a ton of work and makes this your job by any means. I think what we're seeing is just the tiniest bits of encouragement and welcome are going a long way with our students right now. And the more we can all engage in that, I think the better off we will be. I also think that collaboration, you know, we've already had some excellent examples of collaboration from the tiny to the more significant. So the tiny examples are, let's just stay in touch with each other as we navigate this. You know, Captain Hopkins from the campus police sent me an email earlier this week saying, hey, I've got a couple of students with these challenges. Can you support them? And oh, by the way, it seems like this phone number, students are really getting stopped up. Like, let's address that. So that kind of collaboration and just those little bits of information are essential. I know that our faculty collaborated with the marketing team to put together a welcome back to CCRi, we want to support you video. That, we're using a ton and it's been really well received from students. So let's just keep up the little and the big ways of connecting with each other as we navigate this together. And lastly, innovation. What is it they say? You know, necessity is the mother of invention? Well, here we are. There are all kinds of new necessities as we face the COVID-19 pandemic and figure out what it means for our college. And I think we're a really collectively smart, creative group of people and let's tap into as much of that as we can. So, you know, advising has done daily innovation. We've streamlined and put a lot of our processes online, which is helping us in the short term and I think will help in the long term, whether that's the financial aid appeal or the JEA application or tuition appeals or e-transcripts. So a lot of that has helped streamline our processes. Rob Givino said, hey, promise students are having trouble tracking all their different requirements. Can I create a tracker? He worked with IT to make that happen. That's become one of the best tools that we have this summer to keep students moving forward. So I could go on, but I guess what I would say is just, there isn't any one person or any tiny team at this college that's going to get us through this. It is absolutely going to take all of us. And I think if we approach it with a sense of welcome and positivity and optimism, we might not get to 14,775 students, but that approach is absolutely the path to get to the best possible outcome we can. Now look, the best possible outcome may still be that we're 10% off. But 10% off is a lot better than 23% off. And if we really all put some effort behind this, we can do even better than that. So I guess that's what I have in terms of an update. I just want to say thank you. If I could read a list of 72 or 200 names, I would. I know what everyone is putting in right now. And I would just say, let's keep it up. Our students are counting on us. And someday, we're going to come back together and see each other in the halls and be really proud of what we've accomplished during this time. So thank you. And I think I now get to turn it over to my colleague, Vice President Albreton.
Thank you, Sarah, and thank you to all of you for coming and joining us this morning. So what I would like to do is give you all a financial update, a picture of where we are. So my goal today, and I've met with many of you around campus and what you guys have helped me do along, I echo what Vice President Enright said. I've had some really great conversations with people about what we're all going through, what you guys have seen in the past. And those kinds of things have informed what I want to talk to you today. So what I'd like to do is give us all a shared understanding of our current state. And then the other thing I want to do, we'll talk a lot about uncertainty and you heard President Hughes talk about uncertainty and my colleagues as well. There is very much that we don't know yet. So I don't want to start this presentation with you all thinking we're going to walk away with all the answers because we don't have them. But what I would like to do is show you what we're doing to put ourselves in the best position to be able to respond. So I want us to have a shared understanding of our current state. And then what I'd like to do is walk you through what I do and what my team does and what I share with the team that you see here on the screen to prepare us to respond to all the uncertainty as we know more. Next slide. So what is the state of our budget? So let's start with what we know. As Vice President Enright said, and I believe everyone, the ladies who followed me have said, along with our own, our students' lives have been greatly impacted. So that affects their decisions. It affects CCRi. Rhode Island will likely face an $800 million deficit in FY21. I know you have all seen this on the news. We're going to talk a little bit about what that actually might mean for us. At the end of FY20, I know that we all have had these discussions. President Hughes told you about it in her memo earlier this month. With two weeks left in the fiscal year, our budget for FY20 was reduced by $5.4 million. And I think what that does is speak to the uncertainty. I've been in higher ed finance a long time and even even back in the 2000s when we all went through that crisis, I don't believe I saw a cut like that that late in the year. So I think it does speak to the unique nature of what we're going through. You all had done some great work in the time leading up to that point to get us to a point where we could respond. You have saved a lot of money. We put in extra layers of approvals. I appreciate all the extra work that has taken from everyone. But I can tell you that we were able to respond to that reduction because of the work that you've put in. We're all doing more with a little less, sometimes a lot less. But that is how we were able to weather that piece of the end of FY20. We'll talk a little bit about CARES funding. I want to walk you through what we received, what the CARES money is for, what our general plans are for what we're going to do with those funds and what the restrictions are on those funds. So what don't we know yet? You heard Vice President Enright talk about enrollment. It is still very uncertain. They're working hard every day, but again, as she said, there is still very much about that situation that is dependent on the virus. It's dependent on people and their lives and what is going on. And there's so much of that that we can absolutely support them, but we can't control. So when we're talking about budgets, we're talking about variables, which are things that we can control or not. So that is one of those that we can control to a certain extent, but not completely. State appropriations, which is the other half of our budget that President Hughes was talking about, we don't expect that to come out until August or September. What I am anticipating is that, and Alix, I'm sure can speak to us about what the timing would look like, but my understanding is that when the federal bill comes out, what the state will do is go come back together, talk about what that means for our state and what we got. And then they'll make those decisions about what our state appropriations would look like and what the allocation for CCRi would look like for FY21. So again, the possibility of an additional federal stimulus bill is an uncertainty. I know as a country, we all have lots of opinions about that, but for CCRi, that makes a big difference in how we move forward. And lastly, the thing that we obviously all don't know is what's going to happen with the virus. And that will drive so very much of what our work life, what our students' lives, what all of us are doing, what our life looks like in terms of the budget and life at CCRi. Next slide. So we talked a little bit about what are our knowns and unknowns and what that leads us to are factors. So when we talk about projecting the budget and projecting what our revenues and expenses look like, we talk about what those factors are. What are the things that could change or remain the same that will affect how much money we have to support our students, our faculty and staff? So on the revenue side, we talked a little bit about these. Those are primarily our enrollment, state appropriation, student mix. So we have some differing fees for whether people are full-time, part-time. We have unemployment waivers that I'm sure many of you know about and that affects how much revenue we have. And additionally, any policies around the CARES money, that's going to affect what we can use in terms of what's available for us to spend on the expense side. So what are the drivers for expenses? As you all know, salary and benefit costs are our highest expense. You'll also see in some of the other slides, we'll talk about technology and what we've been able to do on the campuses. I believe Alix told us about the Haflex classroom model that you all have been working on. And many people on this call put a lot of work into planning and working on procuring that technology and working with academic affairs on how we utilize that for our students. So thank you for that and exciting stuff. And COVID, the expenses based on what the DOH tells us we have to do in the fall will be a driver for our expense. And lastly, because of the student mix and the uncertainty around what people are going to do, what levels of student support will we need to provide? As everyone has said, things are very uncertain. They're uncertain for our students. They're uncertain for us. So we have to be able to respond as our students come in and need things from us in different ways and what types of support we provide. Next slide. So this slide will show you a trend of our student headcount. You heard Vice President Enright talk about what percentage down we were. So what I wanted to do was give you a visual of the kinds of things that I look at when I'm starting to look at the drivers for our budget. So one of the main ones is students. And as you can see here, as of right now, I believe we are this morning, it may have changed, but this was yesterday, so 25% down as of right now. You can see that in terms of percentages, our full-time and part-time mix are relatively the same. And you can see a downward trend in all of those areas. Next slide. So the purpose of this slide is to give you an idea. And I know we've had some, I've had some conversations with my math brain and it tells me this isn't the scale, but it's pretty. So, you know, we're going to go with it. I'm laughing with Vice President Enright, who I know shares my math proclivities. So what I want to show with this slide is that we are a small piece of a very big whole, a very big whole environment. The general revenues for Rhode Island, the Rhode Island budget is about $4 billion. So 36.4% of that, or $1.48 billion, is for education. Of that, 244.3 million is for public higher education. So public higher education is 16.5% of education, is 6% of the total. CCRi, our general revenue budget for FY20 on the state appropriation side, before it was reduced, so we have two different pockets, what we'll be talking about. We have the enacted budget and then right before the end of the fiscal year, we lost $5.4 million. So this 54.4% is what the budget looked like at the beginning of the fiscal year. So that is 22.3% of the public higher education budget. It's 3.7% of the education budget and it's 1.3% of the total state budget. So we do a lot of working and scenarios and projections because it means so very much to us. But in our state, it's only about 1% of the total budget. Next slide, please. So what I want to do is just give you a glimpse of the kind of work that we're doing in finance and strategy right now. My mother always jokes with me that when I am uncertain, I never feel better until I have a plan. I guess that's why I'm in financial analysis. But this is the kind of work that we're doing. So what we have been doing is identifying every piece of information we can so that we can flex as we see a 10% best-case scenario in enrollment or a 21% worst-case scenario in state appropriations. So again, none of these are hard and fast and we have certainly modeled for worst cases and best cases. But what I want you to know is that we are modeling many, many situations so that we can respond when we do know. can respond when we do know. So what you can see from this is that at the very best in some cases, and at the very worst in some cases, it's an awful lot of money. So I know this is, this is all going to be hard, but I think it's important that you know that my team and I, and President Hughes and her team, are working every day to identify what these drivers are, where we can make changes so that we can respond when information does come. Next slide. So this is a table that shows our revenue by source. So what you can see is the fancy mustard color is our state appropriations budget. So you can see it has held fairly steady. We had the 4.8, 48.5 is where we took the reduction at the end of FY '20. And what this is, is one of our projections. So again, I don't want you to leave thinking this is what I said the budget was going to be, because we very much don't know. But these are the kinds of things that I look at and that I share with President Hughes and the rest of the team so that we can make decisions. This particular model shows us 17% down, or $18.2 million down from FY '20 adjusted Next slide. So we talked about where our revenue comes from. Let's talk for a minute about where it goes. So revenue is one side of the balance of the P and L, and expenditures is the bottom half. So we bring in money, has to equal what we spend. It has to balance. So what do we spend our money on? You all can read a bar chart. It goes to salaries and benefits. I know you've heard President Hughes talk before, and I know you all know this, but the vast majority of education and its expenses in people. So what I want you to know about this in particular is that the five on the right, we're breaking down every single piece of those buckets to see what we can live without. And when I say live without, I literally mean, can we function without this? And those are the kinds of decisions that we're making. So the point of this slide, though, is to show you what kind of drivers we're looking at and how limited they are based on the size of our salary and benefits budget, because that's our, that's our business. That's the main expense in education. Next slide. So I want to talk for just a minute about the CARES grant. I think I've talked to many of you on the call, and we've talked about the CARES money earlier in the spring. The bill was signed for the CARES Act, and it was about $3 trillion, I believe, and higher education got a portion of that. The way that the funds were allocated to institutions was based on their percentage of Pell students. And the second, the rules that came with it, in our first allocation, we got about $10 million. Shortly thereafter, we got another $400,000. The first allocation was split down the middle. Excuse me, $5 million of that had to go directly to students by legislation. It had to go in emergency student aid. We couldn't use it for lost revenue, deferred fees. It had to go to the students who had expenses related to having to respond to the virus. So truly, what I think that allocation was for is that CCRI, because we have financial aid and many of those students get refunds, we had a mechanism to get money in their pockets quickly. So really, that $5 million is a pass-through. So it was given to CCRI, and we are stewards of that money, but it is for our students. It's not ours. So I want to make sure that we're, that we're clear. We talk a lot, when I have conversations with you all, and we joke about colors of money, and this color of money is for the students. It is not money that we can take, it's restricted to them. The second half of the first allocation, that $5 million, and the additional $400,000 we got for strengthening institutions grant, that is part of CARES, along the same lines as the institutional portion, but is a different award. Those funds are tightly restricted to expenses that are related directly to our response to the COVID situation, our response to the virus. So a lot of what Alix talked about in terms of cleaning supplies and equipment, and the scanners, the temperature scanners, those kinds of things are the things that will go to this institutional expense line. So right now, those funds are controlled not only by our reporting that we have to do to the federal Department of Education, but they are also monitored by the State Department of Administration here in Rhode Island. So when Dave and Paul and his team and Emery submit expenses here, they will need to be approved and validated by Rhode Island before they can go to the feds. So what I say all that is just to tell you that the CARES Act was great for our students. That $5 million, I'm positive, had a positive impact. And I'm looking at Sarah, and I know how much work she and Kelly and me for about five minutes took getting those funds out and being so very thoughtful about how it went out, so I'm extremely proud of that piece. What I can tell you about the other is that it's going to need to go to being able to open our doors, because without that, that's not an option. And again, to Sarah's point and to President Hughes's point, that is so very important to our students in particular. But I just want you to know that that $5.4 million is not our savior. It is going to, it is set aside strictly for things related to the virus, and that's it. Next slide. So what are our plans right now? And I say it's a spending plan because Paul Rylender, who I'm sure is on the call, has sent several iterations of our budget, and they are all things like this. The technology for Haflex, we've talked about that. Alix talked about the cleaning equipment and supplies, student supplies and support that Vice President Enright talked about, faculty and staff support that Vice President Kostin talked about, additional emergency aid, and all of the health and safety stuff that we will need to be, to have an in-person and remote presence. So I believe the language in the bill actually says, direct response for the institution's need to take instruction off of campus and respond to the COVID-19 virus. So what that, as a 20-some-year financial person, that is direct response for cleaning, health and safety, taking our instruction off campus in terms of things. So Paul will tell you he submitted that budget several times, and the state is being extremely careful, as they should be. These funds have to go on a public portal so that we're showing people what we're doing with them. They go on one, they will go on one for the state, and we have to report to the federal government once a month with what we're doing with these funds. So again, it's only $5 million in what realistically could be a $20 to $30 million reduction, depending on what happens in all these pieces. And again, we are uncertain, but I do want you to know that we have spent an awful lot of time educating ourselves on every single dollar that comes in and goes out so that we can make the best decisions possible. And as we know more, we're making those every day, but this is where we are with our current spending plan for the CARES money. Next slide, please. So what's next? What does this mean for all of you? So I have been, I have been meeting with many groups and talked you through the kinds of things that we're all working on and trying to give us a level set for the budget. So we're going to continue to plan for those kinds of things. I'll be, Vice President Enright and I speak daily about what's going on so that I can respond, and we talk about how many are coming, what that mix is going to look like, and what those students might cost us. The beauty of the two of us working together is that she gets to see so much of the students, and I hear that from her, and it keeps me grounded so that I'm not just seeing dollars and cents, and I get to remind her that while we love them and it is our mission, we can only do with what we have. And I've looked since I got here, y'all, I don't have a money tree, so as much as I'd like to, we are bound by what we bring in. So what I'm going to ask you all to do is to continue to operate under the budget constraints that President Hughes has shared and that your departmental leaders have shared with you. I'm going to ask you to be very mindful about making sure that everything is in direct response to either the virus or critical operations. What we have done, and I know your Emery in the budget office and your vice presidents will thank me if you are, if you do continue to be very thoughtful, because what we do every day or every other day is approve every single expense. So your vice presidents are signing off on every expense. And please, don't take that to mean that I'm saying you can't get what you need. If you have a real need, talk to your vice president, talk to your director, talk to your department lead, make sure that you're communicating, again, to Sarah's point, make sure you're letting people know how you're doing and what you need from us. So we're going to continue to monitor the federal stimulus and anything going on with the state and let you know what we hear. We'll continue to share regular updates on the budget and our financial position. This has been a goal for President Hughes since I got here a year and a half ago, was for she and I to present with you all about the budget, and we're in a point now where, again, necessity is causing us to innovate. So I want us to make sure that we are over-communicating, and she's asked me to do that, so you guys will probably be tired of hearing it, but as we know things, we're going to share. And I would appreciate feedback from you all if we are, if I'm not sharing something about the budget that you'd like to know, because if I know something in this uncertainty, we'll share. And if we don't know, we'll tell you why that information's not ready yet. But what I want is, what I would like and what President Hughes has asked, is that we figure this out together. I think you heard her say that. So I know this is hard. It's hard for me as well. And Sarah and I, I'm sure, have shared many of those sleepless nights. This is, it's hard. But what I, what I don't want is for it to be harder because you don't understand. There's so much of this that is uncertain, but there's many things that are big drivers that are very clear. So please, if you have questions, continue to bring them to me, bring them to your leaders and your team, they'll get them to me. We'll certainly walk through until we have a shared idea of what's going on. I want to thank all of you. I am incredibly proud and humbled to just to be a participant with all of you. You make me out, you all make me very, very proud. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Amy Kemp for a facilitated question and answer
Thank you, Kristin, and all of the panelists. So I know that we have, let me just stop sharing here. I know that we have very little time for questions. What we are going to try to do is to run long for those who are able to stay on the call. If you are unable to stay on the call, we will, as we stated, try to provide those answers directly to you. So I will start with Alix. Alix, one of the biggest questions, or one of the most frequent questions that we have received, is about the status of the HVAC system in our buildings, and particularly the night campus, and what the college is doing to address airflow, airflow, the airflow situation.
Yep. So, thank you. Yes, it's definitely a question that I've gotten a lot as well. So we do have some challenges with our HVAC system. Our system is what it is. What we have done, and our windows don't open, but what we've done is the staff and facilities have been working on the HVAC system throughout the summer. This industry standard is to change the filters once a year. We actually change them in the spring and are going to change them again in the early fall, so our goal is to change them three times this year. So we're working with what we have, and I know that it's a concern for people. So we will continue, if, we will continue to take feedback on that and adjust as we may, but right now, the staff has been working on it, and we're kind of, we're increasing our practice.
Thank you. And you did touch upon the individualized work plans that the supervisors will develop with their. If you could just expand, we did receive a number of questions about different circumstances. So whether it's somebody who doesn't feel comfortable coming back to, may not have an underlying condition, but doesn't feel comfortable coming back to campus yet, others who may have children who are going to be, or learning remotely two to three days a week. Can you just provide some clarity on what the college is thinking in terms of how flexible it can be to continue telework for some employees?
So again, it's, it's going to depend on kind of your work function and your work area, and how many people typically work in it. And that's why we're asking supervisors to do that instead, because they know that they're, what the needs are more than anyone. We do want the supervisors, excuse me, to work closely with their employees to understand, in particular, in terms of schedules, if they have young children in the home who are not attending school on five days a week, or if they're attending five days a week as for shorter days. So we do want to try to take that into account. We are built, we do also need to build work plans about having a presence on campus. So we do know that we may build something in August and then have to adjust as different individuals have to adapt to new information. I think that we are working to follow all the guidelines that we have from the Department of Health and our, I think in some cases, I mean, honestly, we're going, we're doing more than what's kind of generally recommended. But I think I could just point to yesterday when, you know, the number, the, I thought was the state might move into Phase Four. We're not moving into Phase Four yet, and the governor has limited social gatherings to 15 people. That's how much things change on a weekly basis, and so we're going to have to respond to that. And I, in terms of individual concerns, I really want to point people to contacting Teri Ann Milligan. I think that, I don't think I could ever imagine all the different scenarios that are, people are thinking about. So I just really encourage people to email Teri Ann, and she will respond.
Thank you. So just to let everybody on the call know, it is 11:29. We will continue on to 11:45 to allow for more questions. If you are, if you have to leave, again, these questions will be part of the recording that we will share with the college. So with that, let's turn it on. Sarah, we do have a question for you. Can you talk a little bit about what college services, student services, will be available to students on campus, what will continue to be remote or appointment only? What will that look like?
Sure, it's a good question. I think that nearly all student services will continue to be remote through the summer, and then we'll move to a mix of remote and in-person in the fall. And so we know that we won't have nearly as many students on campus, so we won't provide full-service in-person advising, for example. But we also know, as we've seen and done some of this summer, that there are students who want to meet in person. So we'll be looking at, you know, how do, how do you use a classroom so that someone could meet in a socially-distanced fashion with a prospective student? Or how could we do... Or how could we do the majority of our tutoring online, but still some in-person? So each student services department right now is working on that plan and that mix. And that will be part of, you know, sort of what we come forward with in the middle of August. But the general plan within student services is that we will have everything still online and we will also have all of those services in person to a lesser degree than, than your average fall.
Thank you. We did receive a number of questions about the computer labs on campuses. And if Sarah, if this is best for you to answer, that would be great. If not, perhaps Alix can weigh in here. People want to know, will the computer labs be open? What types of restrictions in terms of capacity will there be? Will they be by appointment only or can students just arrive? And also with printing, now students are printing thousands of pages of documents within the computer labs every day. How will printing and that high-tech area be addressed?
Sure, I'm happy to take this and then Kristin and/or Alix feel free to chime in. But we definitely have a number of needs that we know we need to meet in person. One is computer labs. So for a student who is having whatever issue and cannot access a computer at all, there will be appointment-based use of the computer labs. Those will have far fewer students in them than they would ordinarily, but that will be an option. We also recognize that printers are an issue. So we will have printer stations on each campus likely to be staffed so that you don't have dozens of students touching the printers themselves throughout the day and run into a sort of cleaning and public health issue. So we're looking at how will we get printer stations staffed on each campus? I think the other piece that we've run into, and this is where I know that, I think President Hughes spoke about tablet desks set up in the great hall. We have a lot of students who we will work with them to equip them with a laptop so that they are set up for remote learning, yet they may still because of weak wifi or just complicated home situations. You know, I fortunately, neither of my children are here right now, but I will tell you that I've had many challenges in high stakes meetings with my nine and 11 year old, not having an appreciation for the, the kind of quiet I might need or expect. And our students who are trying to learn and who are parenting or living in, in busy households experience the same. So we will have kind of different options depending on the need from computer labs to printer stations to in-person, just bring your laptop and your headphones and come work quietly on a senior eye campus.
Okay, great, thank you. And we'll stick with you for our next question, Sarah. Is there a plan for student workers who are federal student, are federal work study students? For many students on campus jobs are their only source of income. Is the college looking at creative ways to keep students employed remotely or on campus so that they can still benefit from the income earned through the work-study program?
Yeah, absolutely. I would say both, or maybe there are three ways that, that we're thinking about this. One is some on-campus jobs will remain the same. So some students will want to be those on-campus math tutors and we'll figure out how to do that in a socially distanced fashion and they will have those jobs. Other students will undertake new on-campus jobs that relate to this new mode of operating in the pandemic. So we may have student workers who are monitoring printer stations, for example, and that provides an opportunity. And the third piece is looking at how we can have supervised remote student workers. And supervised is really the operative word there because as anyone who's worked anywhere near financial aid knows, compliance to all federal financial aid laws and guidelines is essential. And one that is really key to federal work-study is that the student has to be supervised. So if you are anyone on campus who normally employs a student worker and you'd like to do so in a remote fashion, that is quite possible. You just need to submit or revise job description as to what that remote job will be and what the plan for supervision is. So you can email financialaid@ccri.edu. If you're a manager right now who's thinking, oh, great, I'd like to have a remote student worker and I'll resubmit a job description, financialaid@ccri.edu. That team manages student employment processing and those job descriptions. So yes, and it'll look a little bit different than it normally does, but we're going to work hard to provide as many of those opportunities as we possibly can. We're also going to monitor the, the Department of Ed. So there were some favorable allowances to federal work-study in the spring. So we were actually allowed to pay out some federal work-study to spring students during the pandemic, even when they weren't working. That option does not currently exist for the fall, but we'll continue to monitor and see what the Department of Ed does there.
Thank you very much. Rosemary, we have a question for you, two questions actually. The first is, will faculty be able to access their offices and printers as needed for administrative purposes if they are teaching remotely? So can they come onto campus to work within their office spaces for whatever needs that they have?
Faculty will be able to access their offices, however, there will be limitations. The templates that will be distributed today, we will be working with department chairs to identify and schedule when, when faculty will be coming onto campus. And for faculty offices where there, you know, are multiple people, that is all going to have to be coordinated. And in some instances, we may be able to find some, you know, additional small classroom space, but there will be more directions coming out with that. As far as the printing, that is an area that CDC and Department of Health are really looking to control how many people are using the printer. So it will be very much a centralized process and there will be more to come on that as we determine how print jobs will be able to, you know, be put into a queue and then be picked up.
Thank you. And for our second question, can you clarify the grading, what the grading policy will be for the fall semester? Will the college use a pass/fail policy as it converted to in the spring or will it revert, revert back to the standard grading policy?
So to clarify and, and thank you, Amy, that question has come up quite a bit. The default pass/fail was a one-time emergency application that we utilized in the transition phase for the latter part of spring semester. So as of summer, the, the traditional grading policy went back into effect and it will continue to be traditional grading as we.
Thank you very much. Alix, let's, if we can turn back to you for a second, with regards to the required face coverings while somebody is on campus, we had a number of different questions related to that. First, how will others know if a person they come into contact with has an accommodation to not wear a mask? And how do they, how would you suggest that they interact with that person if they encounter a person who isn't wearing a mask, who doesn't self-identify that they have a, an accommodation? Or if, if they believe that they're just violating the mask policy? We've seen a lot on the internet, a lot of these videos. How would you suggest that individuals who come into contact with someone they believe is violating the policy, how do they interact?
So I guess let me, that there's a lot, there's a lot in there. So maybe I'll talk about masks generally and try to get to those specific questions. So again, everyone will be required to wear masks in common areas, in the hallways, in shared office space. And if you don't have a mask or if you've forgotten your mask or if you're a student, we have masks to provide people. So if you, there should not be an issue with having access to getting a mask and you need it to enter campus. If you see someone who isn't wearing a mask, so you, people won't know about other people's accommodations. That's just, that's not, it wouldn't be appropriate. That's not what we do now. So if you see someone wearing a mask, I would suggest to start by politely asking them if they have a mask to put it, to please put it on if you're in a place where, based on the guidelines and the rules that we're giving everyone, just to say, you know, we're in a shared space right now, could you please put on your mask? If there seems to be an issue about it, I would just take that, again, take that issue to HR and if it's a student, to disability services. And then, you know, again, they won't be able to tell you the nature of something, but then it'll make them aware and they can follow up if there's a reason to follow up with that individual or their supervisor can. So I'm not sure, did I, did I hit on most of that?
I think so, yeah, absolutely. Next question for you, Alix. So what happens if an employee or a student is diagnosed with COVID? And related to that, what constitutes an outbreak at the college and how will the college respond? Will we revert back to fully remote?
Okay. So I guess I would, I would just say there, if the college is aware of someone, a part of our community being diagnosed with COVID-19, there's a couple of things that would happen. One is, is that we would support the Department of Health in their contact tracing program and find out, you know, where and who the individuals and places where the infected individual happened to be on campus. The other thing that we would, and then of course, if they had been on campus or in contact with people, we would notify the people who that individual had been in contact with and we would clean the areas that they were in per the CDC guidelines. And when I'm, I'm kind of speaking through the steps, I see a lot of this happening quite quickly in part because we are really trying to reduce both the number of people on our campuses and the interactions between people on our campuses. So that's the, that's the, that's the first part. Now I've forgotten the second part of your, the question, Amy, I'm sorry.
What, what would constitute an outbreak? And if an outbreak occurs, what would the college's response be? Would it go to fully remote?
Yeah, thank you for the reminder. So right now, an outbreak is being defined as two or more cases that are actually linked. So if we had two individuals that, one from one campus and one from another campus and they never cross paths, that wouldn't be considered an outbreak. That would be considered two individual positive infections. If there was a nexus between two individuals, right now that's considered an outbreak. What we would do in that case is we would close the building for the period of time recommended by the Department of Health in order to clean it, but we wouldn't move the whole college to be totally remote if that happened. What we would do is follow the direction from health and, and then resume operations when they determined that we had done take it steps in order to make the return to operations on campus appropriate.
Great, thank you. So we do have additional questions, but I realize that we are coming upon an hour and 45 minutes. We will again work to provide individual answers to your questions and we will continue to build out an FAQ that we will be able to share with the college. So I want to thank all of our panelists and all of our attendees who were able to stay on to this extended time. Greatly appreciate your participation. With that, I would like to turn it back over to President Hughes for final remarks.
Thank you, everyone. And thank you for so many of you being able to stay on for this marathon town hall. I don't have lengthy concluding remarks beyond thanking the four panelists who showed up and brought us to where we are right now and laid out a vision for where we're headed. I'll simply close by saying, look to our communications team who will be coordinating very regular communication from Alix Ogden, from Kristin Alberton and from Sarah Enright on both the campus plan and where we sit with enrollment and our budget. So many thanks to you all. Look forward to seeing as many of you as possible as we go forward and thank you for all you're doing for the college. Have a good afternoon. Thanks, everyone.